Call the meeting to order. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I invite you to join us. Roll call, please.
Colpak, here. Pepcorn?
Here.
Strand?
Here.
Turnberg?
Here.
Mahoney?
Here.
Came out of executive session. I have two motions that came out of there. Commissioner Colpak?
Yes. In accordance with the terms discussed in executive session, the city administrator is authorized to finalize any necessary verbiage in the agreement and to make the counteroffer and the mayor authorized to sign the counteroffer, with the understanding that if it is accepted by the buyer, the agreement will then be brought back to the city commission for receipt and filing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Colpak?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Commissioner Pepcorn?
I move to direct the city attorney to work with the city auditor to prepare a draft ordinance for city commission consideration, creating a new liquor license classification, authorizing the licensee upon annexation to sell off sale only.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Colpak?
Aye.
Strand?
No.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Tonight, we are highlighting the work of the city assessor's office. Each year, the assessor's office is responsible for appraising the value of all the property in Fargo. They also help maintain a record of property ownership and legal boundaries. These are immense tasks that the assessor staff tackles with expertise, diligence, and a deep sense of public duty. They manage a high volume of work while providing outstanding customer services to our community. Whether they're working for a first-time homeowner or long-established business, the assessor's office ensures every property is valued accurately, reflecting the true character and the growth of our city. Their professionalism and commitment to our residents and to business owners makes me extremely proud. We are fortunate to have such hard-working, fair-minded team behind this important function. We will now share a video that spotlights the work of the assessor's office.
The assessor's office, really, we provide real estate services for the city of Fargo. Our primary deliverable to the city is our assessment role, which consists of all the parcels in the city, their legal description, their ownership, their tax classification, and of course, their property value, which in the end is our job.
We try and make sure that the assessments are fair for everyone by monitoring the market on a regular basis, by going out and making sure that our information is accurate. And then we also do comparison of properties to each other. We try to compare them apples to apples as much as possible so that we are valuing similar properties in a similar way.
There are secondary benefits that come from the work we do here in our office, both internally and externally. Our data is used by many departments here in the city. Our property data is very valuable to our planning department, our engineering department, our auditors department, and even our inspections department. And of course, there's other benefits as well to external stakeholders that our data provides. Our data is very valuable to the local real estate market. That includes real estate appraisers, lenders, real estate agents, and even title companies. I don't think that the real estate market here in Fargo could function as it does without our assessment and property data.
There's many factors that are involved in the valuation of a property. The primary one would be location. Other factors that would affect how we value a property would be the size, the bedroom and bathroom count, garage stalls, things along those lines.
The property tax is a local tax. Roughly 99% of your property tax bill stays here within Cass County. Within the city of Fargo, about 20% of your property tax bill goes to fund city services. That includes your police department, your fire department, making sure the roads get out in the winter and fixed in the summertime. It funds our public health services, and it funds our library services, among many other things that the city provides to our citizens. So we have a lot of information available on the city website. FargoParcels.com is probably the most heavily trafficked URL on the city website. There, you can search parcel information by address or parcel number, and we provide basic information on the parcel property data, along with several years' worth of value, and also special assessment information. One thing I'd really like to highlight is our office's effort to put our exemption applications online. For years, these applications were mailed out, and people had to complete sometimes multiple applications and mail them back. We've been working over the past several years to get all of these applications on our website and available for the public. We're hoping that this process makes it more convenient for both the public and more efficient for us.
There's one thing I would want the city of Fargo to know, is that our office is an office of professional appraisers, and we work very hard for the citizens to try and give them value for the work that we do. We also try to be as professional and courteous as we can in delivering the product that we have for the citizens, and we know that we work for the city of Fargo, and that we try to work as hard as we can for the citizens.
Tonight, we will present the Fargo Rising Star Award to a recipient chosen by the leadership of the assessor's office. The award goes to Brenda Summer. Brenda has served the city of Fargo for five years. She started as an office associate in the assessor's office and was later promoted to the role of residential appraiser. Brenda is a hard-working, conscientious employee. She consistently delivers high-quality work for the citizens of Fargo. Brenda is a reliable team member who demonstrates excellent customer service and careful attention to detail while working with the residents. She's willing to take on any challenge presented to her and is proficient at problem-solving. Brenda is a valued and vital member of the assessor's team, and we are better because of her. Congratulations, Brenda. Your dedication to public service makes you a Fargo Rising Star.
Is there a motion to approve the order of the agenda?
That's a move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the July 7, 2025 regular meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda items 1 through 37?
The move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Colpak?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Well, tonight, we get to introduce our new fire chief. So I'd like to congratulate Gary Lorenz. He's appointed to this position as the fire chief of the city of Fargo. This is an opportunity for our fire department to welcome back one of our own who started here, grew here, and received the opportunity to provide leadership as the fire chief in another agency. We're excited for Gary's return to be our fire chief and his continued service to the fire department and our community. We will now, Deputy Mayor will help me in doing administration of the city of Fargo oath of office.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Raise your right hand, please. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Gary Lorenz.
Having been appointed fire chief of the city of Fargo, North Dakota.
Having been appointed fire chief of the city of Fargo, North Dakota.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of North Dakota.
And the Constitution of the State of North Dakota.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
Perform the duties of said office according to the law.
To perform the duties of said office according to the law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. And welcome. In addition to the oath that you just took, new chief, to this, in addition to that, the city of Fargo's oath of office, the fire department, as you know, also utilizes an oath, which you have taken before, that I will read aloud that you will be signing later, and it states, "I, Gary Loren, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the position of fire chief for the city of Fargo Fire Department. I will, to the best of my ability, work to reduce the rate of emergencies through public education and code enforcement, protect lives and property from fire and other emergencies, and respond to emergencies in a professional and courteous manner. So help me God." So in closing, congratulations, chief. The city commission wishes you the best in your new role, and welcome back to Fargo.
Thank you very much.
All the commissioners don't know. If you just want to say a few words, you're welcome to do that as well.
Sure.
I know you had some aspirations as you were going through your interview of what you'd like to do with the department.
Sure. Is this, are these on, or just talk?
Yeah, you're on.
For everyone that doesn't know me, again, I'm Gary Lorenz. Prior to coming here for this job, I spent the last seven years in Grand Forks as the fire chief up there. Prior to that, I spent 28 years with the city of Fargo, proudly serving this organization. I was an assistant chief when I left the city of Fargo, but have considered this part of my home ever since, even taking the job up there. Grand Forks was great to me. They've got great people. We created a great department up there. We had a great culture. And coming back to Fargo, a lot has changed in seven years. The city has grown a lot. The department has grown a lot. And I look forward to being a part of the continued growth of this organization, and more importantly, being part of the team. There's nothing I can do alone. It takes every member of the organization from the ground up, and I look forward to getting to know a lot of the new faces that are in the organization, and most importantly, continue to provide that high level of service to the community. It's what is expected of us. It's what our mission is, partially of what that oath read, and I look very much forward to working with the men and women of our department to meeting that mission. Excuse me, to meeting that mission. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. I thought you'd want to say something. Appreciate it. Public hearings. Item 39 has been withdrawn. It's dangerous building located at 2826123 South. Do you have a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion withdrawn. Public hearing 40, annexation of 7.89 acres, more or less located as part of Section 10, Section 15, Township 140, Range 49, west of the 5th Principal Meteor, Cass County, North Dakota. And continued from our meeting at 623 and 77, Donald Crest to explain this.
Good evening, commissioners. Donald Crest with the Department of Planning and Development. Tonight, we have three items here, which I'll be presenting, one of which includes an ordinance prepared by the city attorney's office. Just a little warm-up here, commissioners. This all happens within the same area. So this area in the hash-marked area here is the area of the proposed annexation. Our next two items take place within this area. So you're going to be seeing similar slides again and again here. So this is a, item 40 is a sufficiency of protests hearing for the city initiated annexation of portions of Section 10 and 15, Township 140 North, Range 49 West, as the mayor has stated. Your commission adopted the resolution of annexation at the May 12 city commission. It was item 25 on the consent agenda. As your agenda states, this item has been continued from a couple of previous commission agendas. The subject property of annexation is located here. This is 40th Avenue North, County Road 81, 52nd Avenue North, I-29, Amazon here. These areas here are developed with industrial businesses. You've probably seen this many times from the interstate. This is all zoned already. This area here is the subject property of Northdale First Edition, which is the next item on our agenda. Here's some views of the area here. This is 40th Avenue and County 81. Looking along County 81, it's tough to get a good picture of this because it's so big. Just along 81, the types of businesses there. Here's the north end of that, 52nd Avenue, going eastward here, and then down Highway 81. See the 52nd Avenue sign there. And then this is at the far end of the annexation, 52nd Avenue North and future 41st Street, which is going to be under construction very soon. The property here is largely zoned LI Limited Industrial, which is the appropriate zoning for those businesses, and is similar to the adjacent zoning. This property down here, where Northdale First Edition will be, is currently zoned agricultural, but is proposed to be zoned limited industrial, a lot, you know, to fit in with the rest of the area here and the proposed uses on that property. Commissioners, the annexation process is done pursuant to North Dakota Century Code. This process is not in North Dakota, or in the city of Fargo's land development code. After your commission adopted the resolution of annexation, the annexation was noticed as required by Century Code. There is a, the Century Code states, "In the absence of protest filed by the owners of more than one-fourth of the territory proposed to be annexed, as of the date of the adoption of the resolution, the territory described in the resolution becomes part of the city." The deadline for submission of protests was Friday, June 20. As of that date, insufficient protests had been submitted. The recommended motion, oh, there's the annexation plat here, too. So this just shows the area, again, that's proposed to be annexed. The recommended motion is stated in your staff report and shown on the screen. That concludes staff's presentations. Thank you, commissioners.
Anyone present who wishes to speak to this annexation? Anyone present wishing to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Colpak?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. Item 41, Northdale First Edition. Approval recommended by Planning Commission 2425, continued to 62325 and 7725 regular meetings. It's a zoning change from agriculture to limited industrial with a conditional overlay. It's the first reading of the rezoning ordinance. It's the plat of Northdale First Edition. Donald Crest to explain as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So here, again, we're seeing a similar slide here. Here's that property that was just in the annexation that we just did here a moment ago, a minor subdivision for Northdale First Edition. Again, there's that same slide with a couple captions on it. This is the actual area to be developed here, and then this is another shot from the other side facing south on County Road 81. For many years, Generous Jerry's Fireworks was out here, for those of you Northside fireworks lovers. That wasn't out here this year, but it was, been out there for many years. So that's might be why it's been out to that area. Again, the zoning here is agricultural. The proposed zoning is limited industrial with a conditional overlay that mainly talks about signage and limits some uses that would not fit in there very well, based on the nature of those uses. The plat creates one lot and one block. You'll see along County Road 81 here, these dark lines are negative access easements, which specify where the property can be accessed off County 81. There is no access off of 40th Avenue South. And then as part of that annexation, additional area of County 81 is going to be annexed into the city, too. So again, just a straightforward one lot, one block plat. Your packet includes a proximity agreement in relation to both the airport and the nearby sewage lagoons. Commissioners, you've seen these on properties up in this area many times. Approval of that is included in the approval motion. It's actually part of the plat, and then the mayor would sign that at the end if your, the approval is, your commission moves to approve. The applicant's representative, Chris Mack of Christianson Companies, is with us this evening and may wish to address the commission. The planning commission's recommendation is stated in your staff report and shown on the screen. This concludes staff's presentation. Thank you, commissioners.
Does anyone present wish to speak to the commission in regards to this zoning? Anybody wanting to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Colpak?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. Public hearing, vacation plat portion 50th Avenue North and 43th Street North, right-of-way adjacent to lots 7 through 12, Block 4, lots 6 to 11, Block 2, North 81-2 subdivision, and Lot 1, Block 2, North 81-20, 2nd subdivision. Explanation by Donald Crest as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So one more time in the area we've been working with here tonight. This is an L-shaped street here. This is portion of 50th Avenue North. This is portion of 43rd Street North. There are two subdivisions here, which are interestingly named the North 81-20 subdivision and the North 81-20 2nd subdivision, which date from some years ago. And this is proposed to be, this right-of-way is proposed to be vacated. Again, this is in the area that was just in the annexation that your commission recommended approval for. 41st Street here is going to be under construction. So what happens here, here's a look at that right-of-way. It has never been developed as a right-of-way. Just taking a look at, these businesses use these sort of dirt roads as access there. But with the development of 41st Street on the east side, those businesses will be able to take access off a modern paved improved street, and then the business on the west side can take access from County 81, which is again also annexed into the city here. Again, just a couple more shots of the area. And then this is 48th Avenue, just under construction here, leading to the west. So they'll also, that could provide access there, too, as well. But I think the main access is going to be from 41st. Again, these properties, adjacent properties is all zoned LI Limited Industrial. This is a city-initiated annexation, or sorry, city-initiated vacation of right-of-way. Here depicts the area of right-of-way. And then this second exhibit, which is also included in your packet, shows how the right-of-way gets divided up. So it gets divided between the several property owners there that just becomes part of their property. And there are five property owners involved in this vacation. Four of them have signed the plat for us, and the fifth one is temporarily out of town, but he has told us he will be back next week and will sign the adjacent, or he signed the vacation plat there. As stated in your staff report, vacations of right-of-way are done pursuant to North Dakota Century Code, Section 4039. The vacation is not in the city's land development code. The planning commission's recommendation is stated in your staff report and shown on the screen. That concludes staff's presentation. Thank you, commissioners.
Senator, my president wish to speak to this vacation plat? Company wanted to speak. If not, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Colpak?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, Donald. Community Development, Block Grant, and Home Programs Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. Mark Williams and Catlin Christie to explain.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Before you, you have the CAAPER, which is an annual report required by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for grantees of home and CDBG money. Catlin Christie here with the community development portion of the planning department is here to present the report, and we're looking for a receiving file.
Yes. Good evening, commissioners. So as stated, the city of Fargo is a recipient of these federal funds from HUD, and these are received annually and utilized for various projects and programs and operations in the Fargo community, primarily benefiting low-to-moderate income folks. And so the city's HUD program year goes from May 1st to April 30th, and at the end of each program year, the city is required to report on its progress and accomplishments made from these HUD-funded projects through a report called the CAAPER. So as you can see on this slide, we are in the comment period for Fargo's 2024 CAAPER, which is year five CAAPER of Fargo's 2020 through 2024, five-year consolidated plan. So the majority of the projects from the 2024 program year action plan are currently underway, as itemized on this here slide. I won't go through them all, but we also have several that are from pre-2024 program years that were completed in this past 2024 program year, which are also summarized on this slide. And so more information on these projects can be found in the 2024 CAAPER report, which is available on the city's website at www.fargandd.gov/p plans and studies. After this city commission meeting and public comment period, which ends on July 24, the 2024 CAAPER will be submitted to HUD for final review and approval per federal grant management requirements. The recommended motion, as mentioned, is to receive and file the 2024 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. That's all I have.
Mark, anything else you have to say? Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this? Anyone present wants to talk about the report? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Thank you very much, both of you. Do I need to have a motion to approve?
Receiving file.
Receiving file?
I move receive, receipt and file.
Receiving files, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Colpak?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item 44, application filed by Corvent Medical for property tax exemption for a project located at 4837 Amber Valley Parkway South, which application will use for general storage and handling the medical device, mechanical ventilator components, and finished goods. Jim Gilmore to explain.
Thank you, Commissioner. The Corvent Medical is a manufacturing company on medical devices. They've actually been to you before. In 2023, you approved an initial property tax exemption for them to begin operation in this particular building on Amber Valley Parkway. They're back here today because they're expanding their operation, getting more into the manufacturing and wholesaling of the business. There'd be 12 additional jobs. I think since they've located there that first phase, they've now are over 40 employees, and so it's good to see this kind of growth. The jobs generally pay over, on average, over $39 an hour. I'm going to have Ryan Oshheim introduce the Corvent Medical representative. Tell us a little bit more about the devices that they're making here in Fargo.
Thanks, Jim. Mayor Mahoney, members of the commission. Ryan Oshheim with the Greater Fargo More Economic Development Corporation. I've had a pleasure of working with Richard Walsh, CEO of Corvent Medical and his team, since about this time in 2021, so four, a little over four years ago. And at that time, we're really trying to entice them to relocate to the area and had the opportunity to introduce them to our associates at NDSU, and they acquired some space at the Research and Technology Park in the R2 building in January 2022 to do design and engineering around their new medical device technology for innovative ventilator systems. So we're talking about life-saving technologies, economically diversifying in the medical device space, that kind of type of company that we're really excited and eager to find and then have the opportunity to track to the region. The plan was always to grow from engineering and design into the manufacturing space, and pleased to report, Jim stole a little bit of my thunder there, that they moved into space at the Prax Building at Amber Valley Parkway in 2023. And so I think it's worth noting that that space was unfinished. I think when we think about that building, we think of it as a completed work, but it was unfinished, dirt floors. So they completely took that space from kind of, you know, dirt and studs to a very sophisticated office and manufacturing space. So as Jim mentioned, they're entering the first year of their pilot on, of their incentive on that pilot. And I think just to mention, too, that this is a company that, in their agreement of that first year of their, of their 2023 pilot, had committed to creating 27 jobs. They're currently employing 42, so they've already exceeded their job creation numbers, and employing them at a salary of, was committed to of $97,510. And their average salary is currently 140, over 140,000. So 6 million in payroll. So I think just kind of tracking their metrics between their requests in 2023 and where they're at now, they're exceeding all of those goals. So with that, I'd like to bring up Richard Walsh, CEO of Corvent Medical, to give you a little bit background on the company and the project, and kind of where they're going as they see continued expansion opportunities.
Thanks, Ryan. Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, Commissioners, thank you for letting me speak. Richard Walsh, CEO of Corvent Medical. As Ryan mentioned, we moved the company here several years ago from California because we're looking for a more favorable climate. And it's the business climate that we really appreciate here. We have hired over 40 of the local individuals and employees. We've got a great culture. We actually have 16 NDSU interns right now, of which eight will be hired full-time. We actually have 16 NDSU interns right now, of which eight will be hired full-time before the end of the year. And that's everything from engineering, marketing, inside sales, and logistics. We probably have hired over a dozen of the NDSU interns. We also have UND grads working with us, as well as assistant professors, and a lot of really great talent here in the area. We are now the only U.S.-owned and operated mechanical ventilator company in existence. The big companies left the market in this last year, which is GE Medtronic and Phillips. So, and Vayair, actually, also. So we have a great opportunity in front of us. There's 167,000 ventilators in the U.S. federal stockpile that are now moving towards end of service, and we intend to get a piece of that, being the only U.S. company. We love it here in Fargo. We're going to continue to expand. The space that we're pushing into will be used for, as I mentioned, warehousing and supply, supplying components, and we expect that we'll ship probably about 500 ventilators this year.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion. Can I make a couple of quick comments, too? Mr. Chair?
Well, wait a minute, I got to do public hearing. Is there anybody here who wants to speak to this tax exemption? Anybody wanting to speak? If not, then I'll open up for discussion. Commissioner Pepcorn?
First of all, this is great, and it's a five-year exemption, so I really like that versus, we've had requests for much longer ones, so I really appreciate that. The thing that I enjoy, they've been here before, and when he makes the comment that he's moving from California to Fargo, North Dakota for the environment, I really enjoy that. I laugh a little bit. That's, that's, that's a compliment to us, and it's not, obviously, the temperature. It's the business-friendly atmosphere, and so that's a good thing. So I really appreciate that. And I do think they have a good track record, so that's it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Chair, a second?
Second.
Discussion? Just when you look at calculator, public doesn't know this, but we try to calculate the exemption if it works or doesn't work. And they ranked it 145 after the first year, and they're up to 158 after the third year. So Ryan, you guys put that together, and they well exceed what they're supposed to do in points. And the secondary thing is they keep coming back to us because they keep being successful. And for those in the ventilator market, that's unusual that you beat out some big competitors, and they have a great product. I'm surprised you didn't bring it here. Isn't it almost too quase-sized now, isn't it? It's kind of a small deal, Richard?
It's getting smaller.
Yeah, I thought so. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Colpak?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Thank you. Application transfer class F A alcoholic beverage license from Mexican Village doing business at Mexican Village to Golden Empire doing business at the Phoenix Buffet at 3155 43rd Street South.
Good evening, mayor and commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to talk about the F A transfer here. The F A license was originally issued in early 2014, so it was before the time that we put the moratorium on transferring new liquor licenses. So Mexican Village operated there at that location for about seven years. And when they closed, they had the opportunity to sell the building and transfer that liquor license. Have done the background check, and it's gone through our normal process. It does come to you with a recommendation of approval from the Liquor Control Board.
Is there anyone, president, who wishes to speak to this application transfer? Anybody wanting to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Colpak?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Application for transfer class FARZ alcoholic beverage license from Toasted Frog doing business at Toasted Frog to Toasted Frog doing business at Toasted Frog. Steve Spreg to explain.
So that might sound a little confusing, but this, the, the way that this liquor license, the FARZ, was set up, was essentially non-transferable unless it was as a going concern. And so to make it a going concern, the people that were selling had to find somebody that would run this business with the same menu, with the same concepts that they had, and that they felt comfortable that this new applicant would be able to do that. There are a couple of other instances where we've seen the FARZ move locations, but they kept the same owner. We've also seen FARZ change the business name, but again, the same owner and the same location. So for, in this case, we have it carrying on as a going concern. It's the same location, a new owner, but it should be the same menu, and I think everybody in Fargo is going to be very excited to keep the Toasted Frog in downtown Fargo. We've done our background check and gone through the process with Liquor Control Board, and it does come to you with a recommendation of approval.
Is there anyone, president, who wishes to speak to this transfer license? Is there anyone, president, who wishes to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Colpak?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Construction update. Tom Lockmost to explain.
Good evening. Here to provide the monthly construction update for those projects led by the engineering department. First of all, no safety incidents have occurred since the last time I've presented to you on any of our projects. I always like to share this, where people can find more information, best spot is fargostreets.com, where we have a lot of information about current project status, as well as closures and detour routes, and upcoming work. So getting right into it, on a number of our rehab, or starting with our rehab projects on 45th Street, if anyone's been down there, they know there's been a lot of work happening to repair the concrete along that corridor. Traffic is reduced to one lane currently on 45th between I-94 and 32nd Avenue South. The good news is all the mainline concrete has been replaced at this point, and so the contractor's just working on kind of the finishing touches out there, sealing the concrete, doing some pavement grinding and pavement markings. And this is anticipated to be completed by the end of July. Here you can just see some of the reduction in lanes, kind of what it's looking like after they went through and ground this area. Next rehab project, or recon project, is 32nd Avenue South. Currently, the roadway is closed between 17th Street and 22nd Street. We do provide business access throughout the project, though. Contractors currently working on underground construction between 18th and 22nd Street, and then also working on some paving between 17th Street and 18th Street. And that portion is anticipated to be opening in early August. Here you can see part of that paving. This next image shows the portion that is complete between 15th Street and 17th Street. Next one, NP Avenue between Broadway and Roberts. Underground construction is complete. Most of the mainline concrete paving is in at this point. Most of the curb and gutter is in, and the contractor's starting to work on sidewalk as well. Another project, concrete pavement rehab up on North University, north of 19th Avenue. Contractors currently working in phases one and one A, sorry, one is complete, working in one A. Will be switching over to two and two A relatively soon, and this project is scheduled to be complete later this fall. A lot of other rehab projects that I won't go into great detail on, but working throughout the city on mill and overlay, wear course, sidewalk replacement, a number of core neighborhood reconstruction projects are happening right now. Other citywide spot repairs on our concrete pavement. Seal coat is almost complete, just working on remaining pavement markings. Triple RDC fiber expansion, and then some miscellaneous rehab on sanitary sewer, manholes and lining project, and then West Fargo's lead on the safety improvements on veterans, but that is still ongoing as well. A few new development projects to highlight. One is Industrial Business District Edition, so just west of the area that Donald was talking about earlier this evening. So currently working on the roadway pavement there, and also the storm sewer lift station. So you can see here the forming for that lift station, and they're pouring those walls. Down south, the Southwest Metro Pond Contractor continues to strip topsoil and excavate clay for that pond. What's highlighted here is the box culverts that were installed under the future 64th Avenue, connecting the north half of the pond to the south half of the pond. So the box culvert on the higher up in the image is for the water. The one in the lower end, part of the image, is a pedestrian box culvert that allows that grade separate crossing. Contractors currently anticipating early August that they will be installing similar type box culverts on 45th Street, and that will require a road closure on 45th Street between 64th and 76th. A couple others that are going on, Dakota Commerce Center North. You saw an image of that paving in Donald's presentation. Contractors just working on the final grading and sidewalks on that. And then Residential Development Selkirk Place Third Edition, so just south of 64th Avenue South, east of the interstate, contractors just started there, working on topsoil stripping. Highlight, a couple flood risk management projects. This one is a storm lift station reconstruction, so lift station number 27, which is east of University on 32nd Avenue South. Just an image of what it looks like when they form up and prior to pouring the walls. These have since been poured, and they're working on, hopefully, pouring the lid of the structure soon. We do have some other projects that we're anticipating to kick off soon. Water main installation just west of University, connecting the systems north of Main Avenue, and then up to NP Avenue. We have a lift station pipe repair at lift station 15, sanitary sewer lift station 15. And then City Commission just approved a warrant of the contract for 3rd Street North between NP and 1st Avenue, which we anticipate getting started fairly soon. We do have ever-growing number of completed projects, and hopefully be adding some more again in the next month. And with that, happy to answer any questions, if there are any.
Any question about the commissioners? They're having a good construction, aren't they?
We are, knock on wood.
And when does NP Garage open?
I think there is a delay in that, is my understanding, so our roadway should be done well in advance of the parking ramp.
Of the parking ramp. Very good, Tom. Thank you. Item 48, Broadway street closure reconsideration. Commissioner Colpak.
Yeah, I want to share a little bit of background before I talk about the actual motion that I'll, that I'll be making for this. For the background, at the last city commission meeting, what happened was this item was pulled literally minutes before the commission meeting started. It was on the consent agenda. And in the consent agenda had, had the detail of the application, but it was, it was truly a last-minute request with not a lot of time for commissioners to understand maybe more of the internal processes that happened, and certainly me. And so what I did was, in order to reconsider this, I called Joe Burgum the very next morning after that meeting, and I also called, reached out to Rocky Schneider with DCP, Joe Burgum with, with Volkways, and had a conversation about if, if I brought back this for reconsideration just for the Thursday event this week for the Samor eating contest, would he be in support? And is, would that still work for them since it's such a tight timeframe? And he said, indeed, it would, but made it very clear that they were moving on to Plan B, respecting the decision the commission made at the last meeting. So Joe did not initiate this. I did. And then subsequently heard, I'm sure many of us up here did, from several citizens about maybe bringing this back for reconsideration. The time has come to think differently about street closures. So you'll see my motion. And let me, and one more thing I want to add. I also got the timeline of events. It started in February with the decision finally happening at the last commission, so it was months of back and forth, rightfully so. But I think it's fair to say there were maybe some drops in communications on both sides during that process. And so I think this is a common sense request to bring it back for this one event. It does not actually close an intersection. It would close the street between Second and Third Avenue and north, and the request is for this Thursday from 3:00 to 11:00 for this special Samors World Eating Contest. And so I'm bringing that back for consideration. The other thing that is included in my motion is to instruct the multi-department Street Closure Task Force to evaluate current street closure processes, looking for additional efficiencies, which I understand were already underway, in all fairness, and had a consideration with administration about that as well. And to add specific criteria to the legacy designation, so it's more clear to people who request a street closure moving forward, as Volkways does more events, but other groups do more events. And, you know, the more clear we can be upfront, it's just better for everybody, just like the work we're doing with the land development code, the more clear we're going to be in incentives. So that's my motion, recommended motion, approve the closure for this Thursday for the TEDx Afterparty Samors Eating Contest event from Second to Third Avenue North, from 3:00 to 11:00, and instruct the Street Closure Task Force to evaluate.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have one speaker on this item. Rocky Schneider, please.
I'm Rocky Schneider with the Downtown Community Partnership. Just want to start by saying we just finished the street fair and had a very successful event with local businesses and vendors, and had a lot of great feedback, and I want to pass that on to Chief Zabolski and Lieutenant Moser and the entire city crew that helped us out with that. It was a, it was a really positive event, and looking forward to our 50th next year. I did send an email to the commission. If you had a chance to read that, that's in more detail. I, I think we're very honored to have a, a team like Volkways that continues to push for events that make us look at our own policy as a city and as a downtown, and push us forward. It does require us to prioritize policy and changes, and so we shouldn't let a good idea go away because our policy isn't up to speed. But sometimes staff needs to bring things to the commission to make sure we're all on the right page. This went through a number of iterations over the last, you know, since February, and I think this final approach that is brought forward today is, is very acceptable, and it handles a lot of the nuances that I think were concerns on the technical side. And so businesses are very much in support of events downtown, saying that not all events are the same. And so I think each one of these does need a criteria to go through to make sure that they're following, you know, in order to limit disruptions and everything else. But this sounds like a great event, and it's going to enhance Broadway Square and all the future opportunities we have with Broadway Square to figure out how we can maximize that for the city and for downtown. So if I, happy to answer any questions as well, but appreciate it.
One of the questions was, there was a concern that some of the businesses weren't for it, and that was part of the concern of the team, is that are we interfering with businesses? You just had a street fair, and it looked like the businesses were doing well on each side of the street, but was that a concern over this event?
You know, I think the, that concern has waxed and waned over the years. I think events can certainly do a, a better job at times of engaging with local businesses, and I think that should be a key priority of all of our events that we have in downtown when businesses rely on a shared right of way. I think maybe in times in the past, street fair was seen as something separate from the businesses. I tend to lean into the fact that this is very much for the businesses. 100,000 people over three days should be a boon to businesses. And so we really worked closely with businesses over the last year to try to get them to engage, and many of them did, and did very, very well because of it.
I saw many of them had sales on the sidewalk, kind of make it enhance their business. Any other discussion by the commissioners?
Yes, I would like to.
Turnberg.
Just make, make, mention that I think there was a misconception from the public that somehow we or I don't want events downtown, and I think we all really enjoy the events. They're wonderful. I thank Joe for all the work that he does. And bringing all these people to downtown, I believe, as Commissioner Colpak said, it was so last minute. And then Commissioner Strand brought up, he had been in discussions with several business owners. You have to keep in mind that we cannot all talk together. So we can't discuss this prior to the meeting, and then hearing Commissioner Strand is working with commissioners, we didn't want to undermine any work or progress that you had done. I had reached out to Rocky, and I think we are all in agreement that with better communication and moving forward, we as a city will improve, you know, the legacy, how we wanted to find that and how we want to move forward. But thank you, Rocky, for all of your hard work, and I think it'll be wonderful.
Thanks.
Any other discussion? Mr. Pepcorn?
Yeah, so Mr. Chair, the reason I voted in favor of it last time was the city staff, the PC, recommended to us that it close. And so my question is, were they included in this discussion? And so my question is, were they included in this discussion? Was the staff, are they in support of this? Because that's what we voted to support the last time.
Mr. Kolpak.
Yeah, I reached out immediately to Tom, and Nicole also chimed in, and I also talked to Assistant City Administrator Brenda, who said, yes, in fact, they would be open to reconsider this event the one time, but the motion wasn't seen by many until literally right, the new motion, the singular night request, which was made verbally, was not seen until we sat up here and started the meeting. And so I think it was, that was part of the confusion.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Kolpak?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Peppcorn?
Aye.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item 49, Commissioner Peppcorn requests that Commissioner Director staff to develop an event street closing policy that includes recouping associated city costs to facilitate the closure. Commissioner Peppcorn.
Yeah, and I think the main thing is, it costs us a lot of money to close the streets. And I know the staff is working on it right now, but like, I'm, how much do people pay? Like for this event, does anybody know what it will cost them to close the street? Because it will cost the engineering department, the police department, you have to put no parking signs, and then you have to put the bollards up. And so to me, we have to start charging people, because it's not free. Right now, the taxpayer, the property taxpayers at Fargo are subsidizing these things, and so this kind of goes with a lot of things, where we have to start looking for revenue. And so that's like the street fair, I would like to know how much it costs for closing the streets. And so that's the reason that I put it there, just so that's another thing in the consideration, because obviously, when money is tight, we need to start asking those things. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So right now, the staff is directed to do that, and they are doing that, the police department is looking at that fee charges. We looked at the marathon and how much we charged for the marathon and the staff and the work that they did during that particular event. So as I understand it, Mike, you already have the staff working on this, and will prepare a report for us and bring it back to us, if that's okay with you, Commissioner Peppcorn. Okay? You got a second item here. Commissioner Peppcorn requests staff review parking revenues, sort of parking garages.
Same thing. There are some opportunities with our parking ramps to look at what we're charging now for hourly rates, those haven't been changed for. I've talked to Mark Williams previous to this meeting, he already has a group meeting about these things, and so I just want to make sure. You don't have to get up on top, Mark, if you don't want to, but there are things in the process. But right now, there's, you know, free parking for an hour, free parking for two hours, free overnight parking. I think there's a lot of those things we need to look at, because, and especially, we have another parking ramp coming online, and so what are the projected revenues, and are there some things we can do to enhance that? So that's my main thing. But Mark is working on that right now, so I don't want to put him on the spot, but there is a group, but I just want people to be aware of that, and I do think we, same thing, we need to start looking at revenues. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And Mark, would it be fair to say you could bring a report to us in 30 days? I got to make them come up.
Currently, we are working on with Kimmy Horn and KLJ on a parking study that is analyzing everything in the central business district. It's looking at on-street parking and off-street parking, and it's looking at all our facilities. We have some preliminary findings in that report right now, and we hope to be bringing them in August, September is when all this should be completed. At that time, we'll be presenting some of the findings and seeing if the City Commissioner agrees with those findings, and then from there, we'll be putting together an RFP that more comprehensively incorporates those into how we want to manage parking in the future. Any questions on that?
Mr. Strand?
Thank you. As long as you're going down that path, I would appreciate the balcony view of the bigger picture of who owns the parking ramps? What are the relationships that went into the creations of them? What were the terms that were agreed upon going forward? What has changed and what will be changing? Because sometimes, I'm not sure who's, I'm not always clear, whose parking ramps, whose? But that would help me.
We didn't get, in the study, we aren't looking at privately held facilities, but we are looking at all our publicly held facilities, and we're going through those contracts, looking at what we need to provide and what we don't need to provide and what we need to change.
But there might be terms that went into those privately held developments that we were part of?
Yes.
So we should, just keep that on our radar?
And that will be in the report.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Any other comments?
So, Mr. Chair, so what Commissioner Strand is talking about, we used to have a parking commission, and that's a commission that we no longer is active, and my suggestion is that it be at the Finance Committee, because there's also, there's financial issues with the ramps, and so that would be a way that all of us could be made aware of what's going on, and then we could discuss some of these recommendations. So maybe the Finance Committee, if that's okay, unless there's other, another committee, but I'm just saying, that might be appropriate.
It'd be appropriate in the Finance Committee, you bring a report back to it, Mark. So keep us appraised of that, and I think Commissioner Strand is referring to Block Nine Parking Garage, just how that's different. And I know Peppcorn can go to Dempsey's and usually make it out of there in two hours, so I think he wants to start paying now, so that's what we could help.
I'm very concerned about that, Mr. Chair. But I will say, there's mercantile, the Roco, the new ramp on NP, and so there is lots, there's lots of parking, and there's financial implications to those, and so that is very important, and so I think finance is a good spot. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Mr. Peppcorn again, how many times have I got on here tonight? Okay. Commissioner Peppcorn requests city attorney investigate possibly recovering funds provided to Faith for Hope and the presentation partners. Commissioner Peppcorn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I apologize for putting all those on there, but their money is tight, and I talked to Nancy Morris about this, and Ian probably is aware of it too. I don't know for sure what's going to be recoverable, but we actually talked about this last Monday, and so to me, it's just an attempt, we don't know what we are potentially available to do, and so Nancy is going to pursue that, if that's all right with the Commission. That's, the concept is, there was money taken, and if, we might be eligible to recover.
Embezzled, they're accused of embezzling.
Mr. Turnberg?
Yes.
Just so both don't go crossroad.
No, no.
You want to say something?
No, I'm just confirming that what the issue is, are embezzlement charges, and so money is filtered from the city into some of these entities, these two specifically that Commissioner Peppcorn identified, and to look at the legality of if anything is recoverable.
Commissioner Peppcorn?
So, Mr. Chair, so I talked to our city attorney, and she's not here tonight, but basically what we're going to, she's going to do is to pursue the avenues, and if that's kind of the concept that I'm talking about, and we, I don't know for sure if we'll be eligible to get anything back, but at least to attempt to recover is a good thing. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Kolpak?
Yeah, I'm comfortable to generalize this request of the city attorney, if there is found to be any kind of departure from original terms or some criminal activity, I'm very uncomfortable calling out two people, especially one is still alleged. And so if it can be more general, directed to all recipients of city funds to have some criteria, if and when something would happen, I certainly would support the generalization of this request.
Mr. Strand?
For example, we've had multiple conversations over the years about clawing back incentives that are given to developers that they don't meet the terms that they agreed to. So yes, I'm all for it, if we, if there are no parameters, and anybody who has any financial commitment with the city, and if they've breached it or broken it, we look at it.
So Ian, are you clear on the direction?
I think it's to investigate any sort of taking of money which was not spent, how it was anticipated or supposed to, into a criminal behavior.
And I think the other issue you have, Commissioner Peppcorn, on planning is HUD and other federal government money that we got, and I know one of us had HUD money, we have to be careful about that, because if it's misspent, that gets us in trouble with the federal government, so you got your directions.
So Ian, I guess, Mr. Chair, Ian, this is my question, do you need a motion? And is that specific enough? Because the other thing is, we want to make sure that it's acceptable to the other Commissioners, so go ahead.
I think it would be good to have a motion.
Okay, you want the motion with Commissioner Kolpak's addition, or?
Yeah, if that's clear enough, I'm more than comfortable with, I mean, if you don't want to have a specific individual's name, that's fine with me, but, so I'll make the motion.
Go ahead, who's second?
I'll second.
Diana, do you have an idea what the motion is?
Dave, what Dave said, plus what Denise said, will be the amendment.
Well, no name, so really what she said is, we'll look at anybody who has any kind of activity that the city can, right, maybe recoup some expenses back.
What you said.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Peppcorn?
Aye.
Kolpak?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Recommendation to appointments for Human Rights Commission and the Liquor Control Board, do I have a motion?
Moved second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Kolpak?
Aye.
Peppcorn?
Aye.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Ladies and reports, Commissioner Strand, you went on a trip, maybe you can tell us about it.
I did, I just got back from Columbus, Ohio, attending the summer board retreat for the National League of Cities. I'm not on the board, but I'm vice chair of one of their six policy boards, the Human Development Committee, and so we convened, I'd say there's maybe 100 people from across the country. It really got interesting this year in ways I didn't anticipate, because we have city leaders from across the country convening and talking about what they're going through. And human development includes a lot of topics. Last year, for example, homelessness and substance abuse was really front burner, and we create the Compendium Policies that are recommended across, you know, to Congress and to the states and so on. But this year, it became a conversation that I, that we all need to kind of pay attention to, what's happening in our cities, and especially in the lane of immigration. The stories that our cities are telling and that our city leaders are experiencing across the nation are just absolutely beyond comprehension, and we need to pay attention to what's going on with regards to these issues with immigration and the enforcement of immigration and ICE actions and so on, and the implications of that. There are cities that have business sectors that are hugely impacted by loss of employees, loss of customers, people who don't dare go out in public because they're afraid, you know, that whole dynamic. You know, we have other people that are being disappeared, and essentially by some people's definitions, being kidnapped, being taken and put into incarcerated situations where nobody even knows where they are. It's just a really beyond comprehensible, it's beyond comprehension what's going on in some of our areas of the country. And I'll say this, we're in a red state. You know, what's happening here in North Dakota is different, very different than what's happening in Minnesota next door, which is a blue state. And so, but anyway, this was the primary focus of our entire conference, was human rights and activities, and paying attention to what's going on with our cities and our leaders, and how they're called to task, and it's just, nobody knows what to do, and nobody knows where it's going to go. But I'll say, it's really a hornet's nest right now, as far as conversation and concerns.
Commissioner Kolpak?
Yeah, two verbal updates today. First, I hope you participate in this Thursday's Samore Eating Contest downtown, now that we've approved the street closure, and secondly, a sincere welcome to our new fire chief. Welcome.
Yeah, I would like to see your uniform, but obviously it isn't done yet, so we'll see you when you dress up. Commissioner Turnberg?
I just wanted to reiterate that on Monday, the five of us took part in an all-day workshop with every department head bringing forth ideas on how we could make this budget work for the next coming year. And I have the library in my portfolio, and there's been much discussion about the North Port Library being closed. I give credit to librarian director Tim Dirks, he did what he was asked and brought forward an idea. That doesn't mean that we're going through with it, that was a hard idea for him to bring up. I don't believe he wants it, I don't believe residents want it, but I give him credit for offering, and we will continue to look at the budget with a fine-tooth comb and be cutting things that can be cut, and taking into consideration our residents' wants and needs.
And I think Susan, who's come back, the North Port won't be closing, it doesn't seem like we would need that for the budget. Commissioner Peppcorn? In person, we have two speakers, Olivia Fisher is first.
Hi, my name is Olivia, I'm a Fargo resident. I'm directing this message both to you as well as members of the FM Coalition to end homelessness. I'm speaking on behalf of myself and many other residents who are fed up and honestly quite angry. Fargo community members were promised 55-plus housing units at the start of June, and we still have yet to hear an update about that process. And honestly, 55 units was just scratching the surface, considering there are over 1,000 people experiencing homelessness every single night in the Fargo Moorhead area. You say you want to end homelessness, but how can we trust that to be true when all we've seen this year is the ban on camping, the closure of the warming center, a futile attempt to shut down harm reduction programs, and the closure of the deck on the weekends? It was morally irresponsible and inhumane for you to approve the camping ban, especially without having any feasible and immediate housing solutions in place. It was just as, if not more irresponsible, for members of the Coalition to have supported the camping ban. How are unhoused neighbors supposed to trust that you have their best interest in mind when you aided in their struggle? There are zero updates on the Coalition's website about any legitimate efforts being made. The last thing we heard was that the Coalition was struggling to secure 22 units in April. It is absurd to me that we can have fairs and festivities occurring in the same area where people are getting in trouble for lying on the ground if they appear to be unhoused. What that says to me is that the city is okay with you taking up space so long as you are contributing to its wealth. Food trucks are more welcome downtown than homeless residents. You are constantly failing people by making hefty promises that you cannot keep. These folks are already going through an experience most of us cannot even fathom. Many of them are also under circumstances that prevent them from staying in a shelter. This heat and rain makes for very uncomfortable nights when you aren't allowed to sleep in a tent, especially when you aren't able to consistently obtain meals, medical care, or access to a shower. You may be able to turn a blind eye, but I won't, and you won't stop hearing from us until you help these folks obtain housing. There are empty apartments all over this town, and we should not have people living unsheltered. There needs to be improvements on how our low-income housing options and more dedication put towards getting people into housing quicker. These conversations need to be happening to prevent further suffering, especially because the cold weather will be here before we know it. Your community expects you to do better and provide an update on the situation at the next meeting. We would really appreciate that. Thanks.
Christopher Cohen?
Yeah, I, myself, I attended the most-of-the-day budget workshop last Monday, and you know, it's very difficult for the public to understand the details of it, because I think I'm kind of average in this department, and it's not clear to me why there's such a shortfall. You know, 6.8 million, there's reduced revenues of various types, and I believe there's maybe some federal grant, federal money that's missing and so forth, but it's really a very mixed picture, so it's not, it's hard to understand. Maybe this could be made more clear to Fargo residents, so we have a better understanding of it. I want to say, regarding those recoverable funds from certain nonprofits, you know, it's much harder to recover funds than I think it is to be careful about the management of those funds upfront. So what about starting with smaller grants, and then seeing what the results are to these organizations, you know, from these organizations, and if they do well, then increasing the grants and doing it consecutively like that. Additionally, I had an idea with Communications. Now, occasionally now I put in open records requests, but a few years ago, I was kind of seeking a lot of records, and at that time, I kind of found out what works in the process and what doesn't, and what I think would help, you know, people are, residents are seeking information, but the law requires them to request records and documents, but you don't necessarily know what records and documents exist. So it's a very difficult process, and they'll come back with, the city will come back with results that responsive to your requests, there's 35,000 documents. Then you try to re-request it, changing the wording, and you go through this long iterative process, and really, it's taking a lot of work and time from communications staff. process, and really, it's taking a lot of work and time from communications staff. And I also have suggested to them that they consecutively number these requests, which would be helpful, to reduce email back-and-forth communication, because you confuse your different requests. Thank you.
We have no other speakers, we adjourn.